All right, good evening. I'd like to call the June 7th, 2021 meeting of the Greenville City Council at Order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I would like to call Mayor Protem Glover for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Precious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, the Lord, for this opportunity to do the work of your people. God, we ask that you will continue to bless each and everyone from the management staff and all of us here in Greenville who do the work behind the scenes. We just thank you for them, Lord. You give me all the glory and the honor. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise to the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to deliver the power which stands one nation under God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Madam, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Uh, Councilmember Litchfield, present.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'm here.
Mayor Connolly, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do you have a motion to approve?
That move?
Thank you.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers this evening. I've looked inside of the public input inbox. It looks like there are some comments, but I'm going to advise those that sent them that these comments are subject to a public hearing that should be made at that public hearing.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Minutes for the May 10th, 2021 workshop, and the May 10th, 2021 city council meeting, an ordinance in enacting and adopting the supplement 021 dash S14 to the City of Greenville Code of Ordinances. Item number three is a public art recommendation from Mural on the Fourth Street parking garage. Item number four is a resolution accepting dedication of rights of way and easement for for 4JP2 LLC. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the filling of two filing of two applications to the North Carolina Department of Justice for the FY21 and environmental enhancement grant program. Item number six is an ordinance and reimbursement resolution amending Greenville Utilities Commission's FY2021 budget and various capital project budgets. Item number seven are series resolution for 0% interest and principal for goodness loan in the amount of $1,367,000 regarding Greenville Utilities Commission's assumption of ownership of the Bethel Water System. Item number eight is the 2021 dash 2023 Police Services Agreement between the City of Greenville and the Greenville Housing Authority. Item number nine is a contract award for the 2021 stormwater pipe rehabilitation project. Item number 10 is a contract award for the development of the Greenville Area Transit Integrated Mobility Enhancement Plan. Item number 11 is a contract with Ferguson Group for the for 2021. And item number 12 are various tax refunds greater than $100. Mayor, that is the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Any council members have any questions or like to make a motion?
To approve?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protem Glover.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell.
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley.
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which is the public hearing. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council, the petitioner or representative of the petitioner, and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and of the city council during discussion. Comments that are made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause. This is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Madam Manager, our public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The public hearing for this evening is for the proposed fiscal year 2021 City of Greenville budgets, including the Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, the Greenville Utilities Commission, and a public hearing to be held concurrently on the proposed stormwater management and utility rate increase. I will turn this presentation over to Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, Michael Cowan, for the presentation. Mr. Cowan?
Good evening, Mayor Connolly and members of council. I'd like to spend a few minutes reviewing the budgets for the City of Greenville and all associated agencies for fiscal year 2021-22 before the opening of the public hearing. The budgets for all agencies, including the City of Greenville, stand for at approximately $421.4 million, with the city's operating funds comprising approximately 34% of that at $144.2 million, and Greenville Utilities Commission coming in at $273.2 million, comprising approximately 65% of that total. The city's operating funds of $144.2 million comprised primarily of the general fund, come in at a little bit less than $90 million, comprising 62% of the total. We also have the health insurance fund, approximately $4.14.2 million, and we have our larger fee-for-service fund sanitation and stormwater at $8 million and $8.7 million respectively. Looked at a few of the highlights of this next year's budget. This budget, as presented, maintains the city's proper tax rate at 49.45 cents. That is a 40-year low that this council and other councils are to be commended for. The budget appropriates approximately 91% of all general fund revenues into the city's core public service areas, as you could see displayed here, provides for a 2% average wage increase for employees, and provides three additional positions to enhance the city's operations: one traffic service position, an assistant assistant city attorney, and one assistant staff support specialist. The budget includes additional $2 million in tax revenues comprised of both property tax revenues increasing 2.53% and sales tax revenues budgeted at 5% increase at $1.1 million. $500,000 is a sustaining member of the Greenville ENC Alliance, $200,000 in partnership with the Greenville Utilities for job creation grants, and $100,000 in funding for the MWBE Incubate to Accelerate Program. We have a $300,000 increase in street improvement funding, bringing the total to $2.8 million. It's about an increase of 500 from $500,000 approximately seven years ago. The budget provides funding of the stormwater utility plan that was approved by council back in April of 2019, which will fund over $100 million worth of stormwater projects, as well as operation improvements and preventive maintenance over the next 10 years. That will be funded by a $1 increase in the ERU rate for each year for the next four years. We have the funding of almost $46 million worth of capital projects included in this budget, from the bill grant, Fire Station 7 construction, expansion of Fire Station 1 Bay, replacement of the community pool, renovation of ETS, and the construction of Phase 2 of Wildwood Park. We also have funding for capital projects on a pay-as-you-go basis of approximately $4.35 million. Includes $120,000 in new funding for public safety radios for both police and fire rescue, $150,000 in pedestrian safety projects, $75,000 for the replacement of street cameras, and $200,000 in new funding for information technology infrastructure enhancements, and maintains the city sanitation pickup fee at $16 per month for a fifth consecutive year. With concern to the general fund, it's always a nice sign that it is balanced. $89.9 million worth of revenues and $89.9 million in expense. And this is the formula that we looked at in the month of May when the manager's budget was presented, how we got from the base budget of $88.6 million to a proposed budget of $89.9. It includes a COVID-19 adjustment, where we do feel that we have kind of moved through the effects of COVID-19. As we talked about in the past, we do maintain a conservative budget, so we are holding back on a few of our revenue and expense line items until those dollars come to fruition with rescue transport revenues, recreation parks, investment earnings, and parking violations. That reduction in revenue per the budget is being offset with a federal transit match from CARES funding, and also reductions in departmental supply and materials budgets for approximately $70,000. In this next year's budget, we are projecting a $2 million increase in revenues made up primarily of property tax and sales tax. And you can see how those dollars are appropriated within the budget, a little bit more than $1.1 million in wage increases. We've got and associated benefits. We have the new assistant city attorney position with other salary adjustments that include the other two new physician positions, health insurance and OPEP increases, very modest increases, the $300,000 for street improvements, and $120,000 in the public safety radios, plus the liability insurance is based off next year's projected premiums at $53,000. When you look at our overall mix of revenues, 80% of our revenues, 80 out of every $100, comes from property tax, sales tax, and the utility franchise tax, very consistent what we see on any given year. And that follows suit with the expense budget with 2/3 of our overall operating expense budget within the general fund, coming into form of personnel expenses and south and benefit expenses for the individuals we count on every single day to carry out the city's mission. Last week, Mayor Connolly asked that staff prepare a budget scenario that included a what a half-cent reduction in the property tax rate would look like, going from a property tax rate of 49.45 cents down half a cent to 48.95 cents. If we look at that based off of the property tax revenue percent of $681,000, that equates to approximately $340,000 of a reduction in revenue that's currently included in the budget. From there, staff has proposed the following adjustments to make up for that reduction in revenue, which includes the adjustment of Uptown Greenville Contract of $50,000 from $100,000 to down to 15. We also have the adjustment to the departmental operating budgets with repairs and maintenance, contracted services, and other operating supplies. That's $83,000 on top of the $70,000 that we're holding back for COVID-19. We also had the March rebates or drug rebates come back to our health plan. They came in higher than anticipated, so we see a $50,000 savings in the budget there. With the funding of the full-time assistant attorney position that's being added to the budget, we can consolidate some of our outside legal fees that we're currently paying and see a reduction budgeted there. We also have additional revenue in motor vehicles based off of the April actual numbers that we received from the state, and as part of the budget process, when we had the original projections as far as property tax revenues from the county, we there were a couple of tax appeals that were outstanding. Those have now been complete, and we can see a increase in our property tax revenues there to offset that. So as you can see, $340,000 in reduction in property tax revenues per the reduction of the half-cent property tax rate, and we can come back with a $340,000 worth of adjustments to the budget to bring that back in line. It is worth noting that the budget ordinances that are included within the budget material that was that was submitted to council last weekend as a part of this meeting does not include on this any of this adjustments that's discussed here. If it would be the wish of the council to move forward with this scenario, then that staff would have to adjust those budget ordinances and bring that back at the June 17th meeting. And again, just to summarize what that that scenario would look like, like the current property tax rate at 49.45 cents with a half-cent reduction to a new rate going into next year of approximately 48.95 cents. With that, do you have any questions?
Any questions for our city staff?
Mayor, Assistant Manager, Assistant Manager, how would this would this affect anything that we are doing now? Now, there's a reduction in, that'll be a reduction by having that one half, another half percent. And I think didn't we do half percent last last year as well?
Mayor Protem Glover, the only, let me share my screen again. I will say that the as modeled, the the adjustments to the budget from a half-cent reduction in the property tax rate will have the most effects on the top two line items here, is the adjustment of the Uptown Greenville Contract of $50,000, and then the and then the the holding back of operating budgets to departments of $83,000. I will say that for both of those line items, specifically with the operating budgets, just like we did this year, we will take a look at our operating budget as we approach the mid-year, and if we see that revenues are coming in in line or even maybe better than what we anticipated in this budget, and quite honestly, I would hope that because we do run in, we do a conservative budget. We will take a look and see if those dollars could be adjusted back to the department, to departments, as well as the Greenville, Uptown Greenville Contract. We'll start out with a base budget of $50,000, and we would then get with our Uptown Greenville folks and ask them that if they would like to make a proposal back to the city of how an additional amount within a contract would be used specifically for deliverables. We would then entertain that and take a look at that in light of our available revenues at mid-year as well. The other adjustments that we have here, the $52,000 is an adjustment to the health insurance expense that's based off of very positive experience that we've had with our health insurance. I will am very proud to say that over the past five years, our health insurance has only increased on average about 1.8% per year. That's just phenomenal, given the fact that on average, health insurance costs in this countries, in this country has increased anywhere between 5 and 7%. So we are able to still maintain a very, very strong healthcare plan. That's not indicative always of the future, but at least that's where we have now with everything that we've put into place thus far, as well as the other revenues, motor vehicle and the tax appeals. That has really no true impact on our operating departments.
Okay, thank you.
Any any other questions? All right. Madam Manager, are we going to just hold the public hearing then?
Yes, Mayor Connolly. We would need to hold the public hearing, and we would know to need to know the preference of the city council related to the to the change that we've identified in the budget.
No, there's no, but there's no other presentations?
No, that's it. So we'll just need to hold the public hearing and then have some council discussion.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers for this item, and I will check the inbox. And we do not have any messages in favor of the item.
Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers in opposition to this item. And again, looking in the public input inbox, we do not have any messages in opposition.
All right. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. And to reiterate what the manager had said, she's looking for some type of direction.
Direction.
Don't everybody speak at once?
Mayor, this is Councilmember Bell. I, you know, I'll speak for myself. I would personally like to see us move forward with the half-cent reduction. I was, I was going to make the motion that we do so on behalf of Mayor, since he can't make motions if this is proposal. But if Mr. Bell, Councilman Bell would rather do it, then I would second that.
Well, Mr. McGirt, I believe we have to hold off because we have to require that there's 24 hours before we can vote on this, and I believe this will be added to our June 17th meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Right.
We could say we intend to make a motion in.
Yeah.
Right. We are just looking for a direction from the council so we can prepare the budget ordinance, but the approval of the budget ordinance would be on your June 17th agenda.
Are any of our colleagues on council opposed to the half-cent reduction?
Okay, that's the direction we need.
All right. Without any other comments, pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the city council will vote on this item on their June 17th meeting at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Manager, go to other items of business.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item of business is the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge Fiscal Year 2021 Contract for Services. I'll call on Executive Director Holly Garret for the presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Let me go ahead and share my screen with my presentation. Everybody see that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, tonight, I'd like to take you through what the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge has done this past year, and then look ahead for next year as far as our contract for services with the City of Greenville goes. And I believe the city manager's office sent to all the council our annual report on our deliverables for this current fiscal year previously. So I'm going to try to go through the the annual report quickly. However, if you need any details, please see that document or let me know, and I can send that on to you. So like every other organization, the pandemic hit the Pitt County Arts Council very hard. Our, all of our earned income and fundraising revenue went to zero, basically. However, it is pretty incredible because we continued on, and if you do look at all those deliverables that we were able to complete, we continued with almost all of them. And just a quick reference to our mission statement, because our staff and our board of directors takes this very seriously every day we come to work, and our main mission is to enhance the quality of life in Pitt County by promoting our artists and arts organizations, educating through the arts, and making the arts accessible to the entire county. And as the local arts agency for Greenville and Pitt County, we are the umbrella organization and for all our arts, nonprofit arts organizations, and we were able to continue on with our monthly meetings with all our arts organizations and actually increase attendance with it being Zoom. This helped our arts organizations network, work together, and we have city entities in there as well, as you see Sarah Carapresso up there, Sierra Jones with the CBB. And we really worked together to come up with solutions as to how to stabilize the arts in Greenville and Pitt County. We continued on with our cultural arts community calendar and our artist directory to help promote our artists. We were also able to continue the publication of the Art Zine, which we publish twice a year to help let our community know about all the amazing cultural activities that happen. And with each issue of this, we print nearly 20,000. So we're really getting this out into the community. We were able to continue on with our African-American music series, and Pitt County is one of eight counties in eastern North Carolina that is part of the African-American Music Trail. And this is very exciting because we are now going to be able to coordinate it with the African-American Cultural Trail of Greenville and Pitt County. We were actually able to add performances to our music series led by Carol DeShiel, and we'll be excited in a couple weeks for Greenville groups to happen. We also, you know, I think one of the most amazing things about the arts is we've found creative ways to keep them going in the pandemic. But one thing that stayed relatively the same was public art. It is the art form that is completely accessible 365 days of the year, 24 hours a day. And the Downey Sculpture Exhibition is really our highlight in Greenville and Pitt County. This has been going on since 2006, and since that time, it's gone from two to three sculptures to 17 sculptures, with the majority of sculptures right here in Greenville. Like I said, you know, the pandemic slowed a lot of us down. But what is pretty incredible is we were able to oversee and implement around 26 public art projects in Greenville. This is more than we have ever been able to do, and it put our artists to work and let our community have things to see. And we are excited to continue that collaboration and want to thank the city council so much for your support and understanding that public art truly is not only something that that gives us something to look at, but is an economic driver in our community as well. We also continue to oversee the operations at the Art Lab. This is from initiative years ago to create an arts incubator off of Dickinson Avenue. And this is an arts and business incubator that helps artists not only have access to studio space, but be able to experiment and sell their work and network with each other. We have five artists this past year and have just added a monthly visiting artist, with the last two months being one of our Black Creatives of Pitt County artists. We're very excited that next year, this will be, we'll have more visitors and hopefully increase the exposure to these artists. One of the most, one of the things we're most proud about this last year was being able to grant and sub-grant nearly $172,000 to Pitt County artists and arts organizations. We continued programs like the grassroots grants and artist support grants that we do annually, but we were also able to create a Pitt County Arts Relief Fund, and we are the smallest of the counties, only a handful of counties in North Carolina, who created this fund, all from private donations, and were able to disburse nearly $16,000 to artists and arts organizations in Pitt County. And also, we're the chosen sub-grantor for the North Carolina CARES for Arts Grants in Pitt County. So looking forward to next year, we will begin a new So looking forward to next year, we will begin a new three-year strategic plan in the spring of 2022 and look forward to having a lot of community engagement and interaction, as well as interaction with you to see how you want the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge to proceed. We will continue to oversee the Civic Arts Committee and the Pitt County Public Arts Program, and also the Greenville Mural Group. We will be, we're continuing planning for the arts district, but we're waiting for the release of the arts district to coincide with the unveiling of the Emerald Loop Trolley. We're continuing all our outreach and educational programs, outreach programs like the Youth Public Arts Project and Artist Good Medicine. And we will continue to be a committee member on the African American Cultural Trail and are excited to begin the implementation of the Emerald Loop this year and continue it into next fiscal year. So just a look of our proposed contract for services with the city of Greenville. I believe the Assistant City Manager has already presented this to you with the breakdown, but I just want to make a note that this is only a $1,000 increase from the current fiscal year, and that $1,000 is an addition of one sculpture as part of the Downey Sculpture Exhibition. And I thought it would be good for you to also see the arts council's proposed 2021-2022 budget, so you can see how the city's dollars are leveraged by a lot of other private and public funding, as well as our expenses. And so with our income, the majority of our income comes from foundation and corporate donations, as well as earned revenue through our classes and summer camps, and then also individual private donations. So a lot of private money to help keep us afloat. The North Carolina Arts Council also, for a second year in a row, we are the only smart city in North Carolina that will be receiving funds to go toward our Emerald Loop project. And then we're also sub-granning the grassroots grants, artist support grants, and then also our federal grants that will be coming in, and then Pitt County's investment into the arts council. And then with our expenses, I just want to make a special note that the Emerald Loop is nearly a third of our entire expenses. So that shows the dedication of our Board of Directors with this program, and they, we are behind this gift to the city of Greenville, as well as our public art program. So because the Emerald Loop is a third of our budget, I just want to go through this. And I know I just presented last month about the intersection, so I'll skim over that. But just a summary for our community, the Emerald Loop project is, we in 2018 were designated a smart city through the North Carolina Arts Council. We were the fifth city in North Carolina to receive that designation. And we put together a resource team to come up with a project that would transform the center city of Greenville through the arts. And that project that was chosen is something called the Emerald Loop, which is a multimodal urban arts trail that will connect the gems of Greenville. And so those gems are both arts and cultural assets, but also our communities as well. So we hired a design artist team called Hadad Druigan, who spent nine months before the pandemic, literally days before the pandemic hit, Laura Hadad was here, to come up with the Emerald Loop Vision Plan. And they really listened to our community, met with all, so many of our stakeholders, did some special community projects. And that Emerald Loop Vision Plan, the city council voted to approve in August of 2020 and also approved the implementation timeline, which we have adjusted a bit, whereas this year we were supposed to launch the Emerald Loop Art Trolley. And of course, because of the pandemic, that's had to be delayed one year. So our first project will start in two weeks. This, you saw a couple of, or last month, this is the Intersection Pavement Art at Evans and Reed. We also have just chosen a lighting designer, which hopefully some of you will get to meet this summer to create a district-wide lighting plan. And our hope is that the Greenville City Hall will be one of those facilities that will be coordinated with a really exciting lighting plan with, along with potentially the Pitt County Courthouse and some private development. As I mentioned before, we are part of the African American Cultural Trail Committee, and one thing that we have realized is that we need some new stops along the way that commemorate our black artists, visual artists and musicians. And as I said, we're part of the African American Music Trail as well. And so one idea we have is some sort of public art project that would commemorate both our artists who have passed and our living artists, black artists in Greenville. We are also the umbrella organization for the Black Creatives of Pitt County, and we are hoping to coordinate efforts for them as well, specifically looking at the area on Albemarle Avenue to help create some vitality there. We will also be coordinating with the builds project for three more intersections on Fifth Street at Reed, Evans and Pitt. This will be the planning this next year with hopefully implementation in two years, as well as the roundabout on Elizabeth and Albemarle and Fifth. We're proposing a mural on the retaining wall there. And then the railroad spurs down here between Dickinson and Ninth Street, we're proposing a sculpture trail there. So then we get to some really exciting news. I know a lot of you have heard this, but we are, will be a recipient of the National Endowment for the Arts Our Town Grant. The city of Greenville is one of only about 60 cities throughout the entire country who will be receiving this grant this next year. And this grant is specifically for the Emerald Loop trolleys and stops. And I thought you'd be interested to see the budget for this current year, next year, and in two years, specifically for the Emerald Loop, because so much of our time and funding is going toward it, as well as our major stakeholders who are part of this project. And this is just some of the stakeholders. We have over 20 public and private stakeholders who see this as the transformational project for Greenville to really help our economy and especially the businesses in our center city. And then we come to the highlight of the Emerald Loop. The Emerald Loop Art Trolley is the star of the loop. Not only is the trolley the connector, it's really the activity and the entertainment as well. And this design was done by Hadad and Druigan. And we are hopeful to continue to build the communication and collaboration with the city of Greenville. I believe it's been proposed that there will be a pilot program in the fall, and the art road fitting will be coming hopefully after that. But we are looking, brainstorming and trying to figure out the next steps for the trolley. So we're very excited for the National Endowment for the Arts project and to be able to implement this Emerald Loop Vision Plan. So thank you again for taking the time. And again, the Pitt County Arts Council at Emerge is dedicated to enhancing the quality of life in Greenville and Pitt County.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Holly? Got to talk in a bunch tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to thank Holly for all of the work. This is, you know, I've never been in any town that I, you know, I guess I've been in towns, I just didn't know that the arts, that the Arts Council was doing so much in those towns. But it's clear that you guys are just, have a lot of projects underway, and people talk about it all the time around town, and it's outstanding. Thank you for all the work the Arts Councils do.
Thank you. We just thank you for your partnership and belief in this project and all the public art that we're doing.
Any other comments or questions? Is this just a presentation, Madam Manager?
No, sir. We would need a motion to approve the attached agreement.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Love to approve. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Mayor Protem Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Okay. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell. Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes Mayor Connolly, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item. I believe this one is Attorney Mr. McGirt, Madam Manager.
Yes, this item is council consideration of a resolution to cancel the remote meeting policy during COVID-19. And I'll turn it over to City Attorney McGirt.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Mayor and council, this is item number 15 on your agenda, and it's involving canceling the remote meeting policy and resuming in-person meetings. Let me share my screen here. Okay, Mayor and Council, can you see the screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Again, it's entitled Canceling Remote Meeting Policy and Resuming In-Person Meetings. As you all know, the governor, the governor's latest executive order provides that the state is experiencing lower rates of COVID-19 diagnosis, and vaccines are widely available at no cost. The resolution attached to this agenda item, it cancels the remote meeting resolution, which was adopted in August of 2020 during COVID-19, to require council and all city public bodies to meet remotely until further notice. So it cancels that policy and resumes in-person meetings. The policy will go into effect August 1, 2021. And the resolution also says that each public body has to file an amended schedule with the city clerk to show the place of their regular meetings. And that's required by the open meetings law. Each public body has to file a schedule with the clerk showing where you're going to meet. Right now, the schedule shows that the meetings are remote, so each public body, for instance, the city clerk will file an amendment showing that the council effective August 1 will be conducting meetings in council chambers instead of Zoom meetings. There was some discussion when a council member placed this on the agenda for May 24 of a hybrid meeting. I am of the view that North Carolina law, open meetings law, and the law dealing with declarations of emergency and allowing remote meetings during a declaration of emergency allows two types of meetings under North Carolina law. You can have a remote meeting, and you can have an in-person meeting. This hybrid meeting is not so clear. For instance, during a state of emergency, if you had, if you have one member who is remote, if Councilmember A is remote and all of you all are in person, that is still a remote meeting, and you would still have to comply with the public hearing rules to allow 24-hour comment period. The meeting would still have to be live streamed. In the board and commission policy, it allows electronic participation by a board member, not council, but just the boards and commissions here in our city. But a quorum of the members have to be physically present, and that remote member who's participating electronically cannot count towards the quorum and does not vote. And I think that was placed in there for a reason, because it's just not clear on the authority of a board member to participate, particularly to vote and to count toward a quorum when they're participating electronically outside of the current remote meetings law. So here, the recommendation tonight for council is to cancel the remote meeting policy, to resume in-person meetings effective August 1, and to direct each city public body, including the city clerk, to file an amended schedule with the clerk showing the place of the regular Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McGirt? Lots of questions tonight. Would anyone like to make a motion then?
Councilmember Bell, move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover? You're muted. Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell. Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes Mayor Connolly, six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 16, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 16 is a Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 10 to the 2021 City of Greenville Special Revenue Grant Fund and the Capital Projects Fund. I'll turn it over to Financial Services Director Byron Hayes for that presentation. Mr. Hayes?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number 10. The Budget Ordinance Amendment 10 includes adjustments to the General Fund, the IT, Recreation Parks and Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund, the Fleet Fund, Housing Fund, and the Grant Special Revenue Fund. Breakdown on the amendments, we are adjusting the FY 2021 General Fund revenues and projected to the projected actual and recorded, recording the projected year in appropriations. It's an increase to the General Fund IT and Rec and Parks Capital Projects Fund of about $1.3 million. We are reclassifying restricted fund balance in the General Fund to, for the fleet operations to the Fleet Fund, which is an increase to those two funds of about $1.25 million. We are recognizing American Rescue Plan funding received for the home program. It's an increase to the housing fund of about $2 million. Adjusting bond proceeds for the construction of the Fire Station 1 Bay Extension, an increase in the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund of about $100,000. We are adjusting bond proceeds for the construction of the new community pool in the Recreation Parks Capital Project Fund, which is an increase of about $760,000. Recognizing additional revenue received as payment for additional workers' compensation claims for the engineering department, it's an increase in the general fund of about $16,000. And lastly, we are recognizing grant funds received from the North Carolina Department of Commerce for building reuse grant for WorldCat, which is an increase to the Grant Special Revenue Fund of $500,000. And as a result of these amendments, the City of Greenville Operating Fund budget increases to $161.8 million, and staff recommends approval of the City of Greenville Operating Fund Ordinance, Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, and Special Revenue Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Hayes? I don't know why, but I was anticipating that. Any council members like to make a motion?
Councilmember Bell, move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Sorry about that. Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes Mayor Connolly. Motion passes Mayor Connolly six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the review of the June 17, 2021 City Council Agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. On June 17th, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay, the first board we have is the Board of Adjustment. We've got a, an appointment for Councilmember Litchfield for Christopher Lilly's seat. It looks like he is eligible for reappointment.
I will chat with Mr. Lilly and see if he would like to be reappointed.
Okay. Next would be also Board of Adjustment, Councilmember Daniels for the appointment or reappointment of Ms. Sharon Evans' seat, and she is eligible for reappointment.
I plan to reappoint her.
Okay. Next would be, and again, because I believe it's a rotating seat, this is Councilmember Litchfield listed again for Mr. Nathan Cohen's seat. And it looks like he is eligible for reappointment.
I will check with him and see if he'd like to be reappointed.
Okay. And finally, for the Board of Adjustment, we have for Mayor Connolly, it's Ryan Pirtle's seat, and it looks like he is also eligible to be reappointed.
I intend to reappoint Mr. Ryan Pirtle.
Okay. Next is the Greenville Utilities Commission. And we are seeking a recommendation from the county for Mr. Parker Overton's seat. Once they send over a recommendation, we'll forward that to you all for appointment. And next is Mr. Thomas Stotin's seat. He is a city appointment. Usually they're up for automatic reappointment unless the city council chooses to do otherwise. Next would be the Housing Authority. We do have one appointment there for Councilmember Litchfield. It's for Mr. Sterling Admin's seat, and it looks like he is not eligible for reappointment.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the Human Relations Council. Two appointments for Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I'll continue it.
Okay. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Councilmember Meyerhopper?
I'll look into that. I thought I got them all. And do I still have another one?
Well, it looks like Mr. J.J. McLamb. His seat is actually expiring this summer. He is not eligible for reappointment. And then we are seeking a recommendation from the city on Mr. Kenneth Ross's seat. He's a county appointment. And it looks like he is eligible if you'd like to reappoint him or nominate him to the county commissioners.
All right, I'll check in with everybody. Thank you.
Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a few appointments. The first is for Mr. Kevin Fason. That's Councilmember Daniels. And it looks like he is eligible for a reappointment.
And that's who plans to reappoint him.
Okay. Next is Mr. Les Robinson. That appointment would be made or recommended by Mayor Connolly, and it looks like he is eligible for a reappointment.
I will intend to reappoint.
Okay. Next is Mr. Christopher West, and it looks like that is Councilmember Meyerhopper's appointment, and it looks like he is eligible to be reappointed.
I'll confirm that he, that they want to be reappointed.
Okay. Next is the Recreation and Parks Commission. First seat is for Ms. Carrie Watson. That is Councilmember Meyerhopper's appointment, and Ms. Watson has resigned.
I'll continue that one.
Okay. Next is the seat for Mr. James Yonker. That's Councilmember Litchfield, and it looks like he has hit his term limits. So he is not eligible to be reappointed.
Okay.
Okay. And last for, for boards and commissions is Youth Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
I'll continue it.
Okay.
Isn't there also a city recommendation to the County Human Relations Board?
That's on the agenda as a separate item.
Okay.
So following up, after appointments to boards and commission, the council will consider appointments to the Greenville ANC Alliance Board. And the council will also consider appointments to the Pitt County Human Relations Commission. The council on June 17th will hold a number of public hearings, which will include an ordinance requested by Happy Trail Farms LLC to rezone 17.2 acres located along the eastern right of way of Port Terminal Road and 350 feet north of East 10th Street from R6A to R6. Item five will be a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by the city of Greenville to rezone 5.2345 acres located along East 1st Street and the Tar River, roughly between North Green Street and Baker Street from OR and R6 to CD, which is downtown commercial. Item number six is a public hearing to consider an ordinance requested by Planning and Development Services Department to amend Title IX, Chapter IV, Article U, Appendix A, Table of Uses of the City Code to add 8X, which is Dance Studio, as a permitted use in the following districts, CDF, CG, CH, and to add 13E, which is Parcel Delivery Service, as a permitted use in the following districts, General Commercial, which is CG, and Neighborhood Commercial. Item number seven is a public hearing for an ordinance requested by Planning and Zoning Commission title, amending Title IX of the City Code to be in compliance with the North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 160D. Those are the public hearings. The council will also consider the additional items of business. The adoption of ordinances adopting the fiscal year 2021, '22 City of Greenville budgets, including Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority and the Greenville Utilities Commission. Item nine is an anti-denialition-by-neglect ordinance staff presentation. Item number 10 is a discussion of a low-speed vehicle ordinance. Item number 11 is to hear the consultant status report on the 2021 municipal election and redistricting. And item 12 is the Historic Preservation Commission's resolution requesting funding for the potential designation of five city-owned properties as local landmarks. That's the agenda for the June 17th meeting, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Move on to the City Manager's Report.
Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to comments by the mayor and the city council. Let's start with Councilmember Meyerhopper.
I have no voice. I'm all set.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
All right. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to congratulate the Pirates on their regional victory this past weekend. I was there last night when they won it. It was a late night. Game went till almost one o'clock. But happy to see those guys having a great year and looking forward to watching them this coming weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Daniels?
I just want to thank everyone who came out to the Heart of the City events in West Greenville this weekend. A special thank you to Ms. Deborah Shepherd and Heart of Scope for bringing the community together. It was a wonderful event. The weather held out. So again, thank you, everyone.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Okay. I don't have any comments.
That can't be true.
What do I have? Nothing?
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, at least me. I just want to say congratulations to all of our high school graduates that graduated this weekend. Big, big step in your life. I know many people will be making decisions on their next step. Some will be going off working, getting into the workforce. Some will be going off and furthering in their education. Some might be entering the military. Whatever your choice is moving forward, best of luck to you. We'll look forward to continuing to see you grow and we'll be here to help support you however we can as a city. We'll hopefully that if you venture off and leave our beautiful city, that you'll find your way back here at some point. Also, congratulations to the Pirates. What a great weekend to be able to come away and, and win the Greenville Regional here and now go on to super regionals. I am hopeful that this will finally be our year that we are going to break through and get to the College World Series. Keep my fingers crossed and hopefully that will end up happening. Also, reminder about Concert on the Commons, which is taking place every Thursday. This last Thursday was rained out unfortunately, but they're going to be having another Concert on the Commons on June 10th. The music act will be Night Years, and then they'll be doing it again on June 17th. And the musical act will be Liquid Pleasure. So make sure you get out there. If you go out there on the 17th, you'll be able to voice your opinion and, and let us know what you think about the Wildwood Park. So make sure you get out there and have some fun and enjoy some music. And then also as a reminder, Greenville Grooves is coming up on June 18th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. So make sure you book your calendar to be out there. That's always one of the, my favorite celebrations. Got great music and you'll have a good time out there. And then also a reminder to, to continue to put this on your schedule. There's going to be a lot of Juneteenth events coming up, In the Black Business Pop-Up Celebration, Celebration of the Culture, and then Juneteenth 90's Festival. And then I believe the West Greenville Health Council is also doing a virtual Juneteenth celebration as well. So make sure you put that on your calendar. There's a lot of things that are happening over the next couple of weeks. So make sure that you are out in our community and taking advantage of all the great things happening. And that is it. I'll stop talking. Anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Councilmember Bell, so I moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes Mayor Connolly six zero.
Thank you very much. Hope everybody has a good week. We will see you on the 17th.
All right. Good night, everyone.